And we'll start with Ms. Caroline Hunter. I saw her before.
Good evening.
There we go. Hi, okay.
Hi, how are you? Thank you so much for having me. Thank you to the Cambridge Port Neighborhood Association for hosting this. I appreciate the opportunity to share my candidacy with you. I'm a resident of Cambridge for more than fifty years, originally in Area Four and in Cambridge Port for about twenty-five years, I believe. I'm a retired educator. I have more than thirty-four years' experience at Cambridge Winterland High School, five of which was an assistant principal. I'm a parent of a kid who matriculated through the Cambridge Public Schools Systems K through twelve. I'm dedicated to community service, including twenty-four years on the Scholarship Committee in numerous, not only high school, but also was active in my neighborhood as well around gun violence and affordable housing in the Cambridge Port neighborhood. I'm also an educator, educational advocate. I've been involved in education for more than forty years and also am a founder of Benjamin Banneker Charter School, which was founded by Black parents and members of the community because of our dissatisfaction with the quality of education in Cambridge. That school was founded in nineteen ninety-eight. We've made better progress in the Cambridge Public Schools. As a matter of fact, the Banneker is one of seven schools nationally, including three hundred fifty schools, seven schools in the state, three hundred fifty schools nationally called the Blue Ribbon School, because they have achieved unusual parameters around the achievement gap and proving that children of all ages and all experiences with disabilities and all socioeconomic factors can learn as well. So I bring to Cambridge and to the school committee thirty-four years of public school experience advocacy as a teacher and administrator and as a parent. My priority is transparency. I believe we should publish the data on student performance, not just MCAS data, but also how students perform on our courses. Back in nineteen eighty-six, eighty-seven, as the head of the Concerned Black Staff Organization, an organization of the black staff of the entire school district, we not only ran scholarships and scholarships for students and advocacy for teachers, but we also published the first data report on students that showed that even on the performance of our own measures, our students were performing before grade level. I'm also for accountability, set standards for the delivery of service, and I want to focus on the achievement gap. Our Black and Brown children are not reading well and our eighth-grade math is not doing well. Please give me your number one vote. Go to voteforcarolinehunter.com. I appreciate this opportunity to share with you and I look forward to your number one vote. Thank you, Cambridge Neighborhood Association, Cambridge Neighborhood Organization. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. David's up next. Oops, sorry. Hold on a sec. All right, David. Go ahead, please.
Hi, I'm David Weinstein. I'm serving my second term on the Cambridge School Committee. Thank you to the CNA for hosting. I'm a Cambridge Public Schools parent of children now in sixth and eleventh grade, and I've lived in Cambridge for twenty-two years. I'm a former public school classroom teacher and I was a public school kid. I've spent my career in K-12 and college education. My overriding concern is our persistent racial, economic, and gender opportunity gaps. Recent data show Cambridge is one of very few communities returning close to pre-pandemic levels of academic achievement and show we've also maintained pre-pandemic opportunity gaps. In fact, those gaps have widened in some cases. We need to close those gaps. I'm proud of the Individualized Student Success Plan system I've advocated for and that we're now developing with support from the Harvard Grad School of Education's EdRedesign Lab. It will be a key lever for that change, knitting together our schools, city agencies, and community organizations, businesses, and the trades to ensure that cradle-to-career, no child falls through the cracks or lacks support to reach their potential. We have so much in Cambridge. Every child connects with our schools and we bear responsibility for ensuring each child and every family is truly known and is consistently connected with the supports and opportunities that will let them thrive and flourish. In my first term, which began in January twenty-twenty, I worked tirelessly for the health and safety of our children and educators through the pandemic. And as we recover, I focused on targeted academic and social supports. We've made a lot of progress in these last two years. I've been a leader in our work establishing universal preschool and committing to individualized student success plans and updating our hate and bias-related incident policy. I also led the update to our menstrual equity policy and our commitment to an all-electric school bus fleet. I played a key role in securing our commitment to Algebra One for All in eighth grade, writing a motion joined by Rachel Weinstein and Caroline Hunter that called for equitable access on a timeline that was reflected in the plan announced by the superintendent and mayor in August. I'm committed to seeing that we follow through on this timeline for Algebra One with educationally sound practices that support our students to succeed and build on the work of our educators this year on complex instruction. I'm running for reelection because we've made progress and we've built momentum, but we're not done yet. These are long-term projects and it will take strong collaborative leadership and continued commitment to see them through. Looking forward, I believe we should emphasize learning and growth over standardized tests, preserve and expand recess, playful experiences in after-school, ensure special ed and advanced learning needs are fully met, recommit to career and technical education, improve communication and transparency to empower families and caregivers, and critically, we must support our educators so they have what they need to reach our shared goals, including staffing, collaboration time, materials, resources, salaries, and benefits. Achieving our goals for Cambridge requires collaboration and community. That's what Cambridge is to me. I ask your number one vote so I can continue the work I've started, focused on ensuring our children can succeed and thrive on their own terms both before and after graduation.
Thanks very much. Okay, Richard, are you here?
I am.
Yay, there you are. All right, please, join us.
Ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, and I want to thank the organizers for pulling together this. It'll be a different forum. I think it's a great way to help us get the community to know each of the candidates. So I'm Richard Harding, hopefully your number one choice for school committee. A little bit about me, I'm a former school committee member and quite frankly, coming back because there's a job. A lot of things that I did instigated at the first part of my school committee career, there's been a lot of things that have been left on the table. So I'm looking forward to being a leader on the school committee once again. I'm a proud graduate of CRLS and my daughter as well. I'm a public health professional. I worked for the Cambridge Public Health Department as the manager of Community Engagement and Bi-Park Men's Health. I'm a Cambridge Peace and Justice Award winner and the vice president of the Cambridge branch of the NAACP. I've been committed to public service for most of my adult life and one of the things that causes me great pain is to see our children not excel in the Cambridge Public Schools. For me, one of my major priorities is looking to really have an intentional strategic effort to close the academic achievement gap. This is an indictment on our city and I think that it's unjust that we send many of our Black and Brown kids to the Cambridge Public Schools and they do not unfortunately find success and the success that they need is right in front of them. So for me, this is about high standards and not high stakes. It's about looking at how we can change the game for these young people. I also want to make sure that we're paying attention to the social, emotional health of these young people after COVID. The pandemic has been over, but this pandemic will have residual effects on our kids and we need to make sure we're paying particular attention to that. I look forward to leading on the school committee in that area. And then last but not least, making sure that we have excellent instruction in every classroom. One of the things that is important to me is to make sure each child every day has a teacher in front of them that's not only supported, but make sure that they are in a position to teach young people how to be lifelong learners and enjoy the success that the Cambridge Public Schools should offer them so that they can take care of themselves and anyone that they bring into the world. We live in the most innovative square mile in the world and there's no reason why our kids can't take advantage of that. I just want to say I'm glad to see that people are jumping aboard the high-level math. It's something I started in a motion two thousand thirteen. I look forward to serving on the school committee. I'm going to ask for your number one or number two vote in this upcoming election and I hope that you would take the time to check out some of my other positions. Thank you and thank you to the Cambridge Port Neighborhood Association.
Thank you very much. Richard Alborz, please. I think I saw you there.
Yeah, I think I'm here.
Okay, great.
Good. Great. Thank you so much. You know, thanks to everybody for helping host this. Just a brief introduction of me. My name is Alborz. I'm originally from the Knoxville Oak Ridge area in East Tennessee. I did my college in the Bay Area and worked for a few years thereafter doing research and developing several introductory scientific courses. I moved in twenty-eight to Cambridge to do computational biology work at the Broad Institute and I'm now working in biotech, working on developing cancer drugs. So my top priority going into, into the following years would be to immediately introduce Algebra One and Computer Science at our upper schools, given the role that they'll play for everyone in a changing world. The algebra is relatively straightforward, given that there's a big curriculum and the infrastructure to teach it is mostly in place. So it's in some sense relatively low-hanging fruit to simply run those again. For Computer Science, I think the first step is recruiting local teachers. During the first year of the pandemic, my undergraduate college provided a free introductory Computer Science course online, which was taught globally by people and perhaps unsurprisingly, a number of volunteers, including myself, Cambridge. So I would connect this group to work with current teachers in order to design a curriculum that can be taught year-long in our middle schools. And for like one example, I think of a community accomplishment that I'm proud of is my role in starting and hosting science bowl tournaments here in Cambridge at MIT. Science Bowl is a real-time science competition for middle and high schoolers nationally. And we started an invitational tournament from nineteen, for which this year's edition in a couple of weeks will host over forty local and national teams. The event is a small, but I think meaningful part of the technological status of Cambridge and my goal on the school committee would be to further provide a platform for creating more of these opportunities for students in the area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for staying in the time, everyone, so far. Rachel Weinstein, you're somewhere.
I'm right here. Can you see me?
Yes, now I see you. Okay.
Great. Good evening, everyone, and thank you to the Cambridge Port Neighborhood Association for helping all the voters do their due diligence and hosting us for this event. My name is Rachel Weinstein. I'm a proud product of the Cambridge Public Schools, K-12. I have a daughter who is in tenth grade now and I am in my second term on the school committee. To your question of top priority, like everyone else, right? I want to close the achievement gaps and the opportunity gaps, but I'm going to give you two really tangible things now that I have some experience that I think I can commit to in the next term if I'm lucky enough to be re-elected. The first is, and you heard my colleague, Member Weinstein, talk about this. I really believe that our schools work best for the young people who have someone helping them navigate through them. My slogan's always been "A Champion for Every Child." So I'm thrilled that we have, as part of our district plan, these student success plans and one of my priorities is to be sure that the way they're implemented in our district is not just a piece of software, which I know sometimes administration is tempted to do, but that every young person actually has an adult who sits down with them, finds out what their interests are, what their strengths are, what supports they need, and helps put the supports in place. So that's one thing I'm really hoping to work for in the next term. I also really want to attend to our organizational culture. Morale is low. We've got some processes that need some changing. In terms of what I'm proud of, I'm very proud to have advocated for and now have in establishment the Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. I think in order to close the achievement and opportunity gaps, we need to attend to our implicit, explicit biases and that only happens when we are working on equity hand-in-hand with academics. And then I just want to say that I'm also proud to be somebody who doesn't shy away from the hard work. So whether that is being very vocal for COVID vaccine mandates, whether that's evaluating, I coordinate as vice chair, I coordinate the superintendent's evaluation. We gave her a needs improvement rating this summer. It's a hard thing to do. It's an important thing to do. I stood at the negotiating table. I've spent more than a hundred hours. I want our teachers to have an excellent deal and I think they will at the end of all of this. And even this week, you know, supporting our Jewish and Muslim students and families by coming out with a shared statement with our wonderful mayor. So I will leave it there. I ask for your number one vote. Thank you so much.
Thanks very much, Rachel. Appreciate that. Jose, you're over.
Yeah, yeah.
Hello.
Yeah, my name is Jose Luis. Sorry.
No, please, go ahead.
Sorry, yeah, yeah. My name is Jose Luis Rop.
Oh, sorry. You've been muted. Let's start over. Probably my fault. All right.
I always think that you've got it. Thank you for letting me start over again. Yeah, my name is Jose Luis Ropas Villarreal. I bring integrity, compassion, and long-term thinking to the school committee election this year. It's my honor to humbly introduce myself. In the next couple of minutes, I will share with you my accomplishments during my previous terms and what I will work on if given another term. Thank you for listening and hopefully consider giving me the number one vote. I've been living in Cambridge for more than twenty years. My wife and I have two boys in the public schools, one in middle school and the other one in high school. We were both born outside of the US but came here because of work. Always stayed here because of the community that Cambridge is. I personally work four days a week for a community lending fund, which allows me to at least work one full workday on school committee issues. As far as what I've done during the last four years, I mean, if I had to boil it down to one thing is that I've had the responsibility and privilege to serve the community, responding to everything from a one-time challenge, which was the pandemic, to more quote-unquote regular things like developing a district plan. I've shown that I can bring people together, people with various points of view and data considerations, and be able to come up with consensus or other ways to move forward. For example, as Chair of the Buildings and Brands Subcommittee, I listened to community members during the pandemic and the development of the Health and Safety Manual that brought our children safely to in-person learning sooner than most of the districts. This next election obviously brings challenges and opportunities. For me, the opportunities, my number one opportunity, short-term opportunity, is to support the successful rollout of preschool in the city, while at the same time addressing possible negative impacts on our kindergarten enrollment process. My long-term number one priority is to review the long-range facilities condition study of our buildings that are not new and use it to replicate educational programs that have shown that they reduce the effects of opportunity gaps in our students. All of this obviously ambition to ensuring that the school committee has data-driven discussions and that we have expectations for all of our students. Please go to my website for more details on these and other issues. I hope you enjoyed hearing my ideas and you will give me your number one vote November seventh. No candidate is safe in a ranked choice voting system, so every vote counts. Please contact me if you have questions or about my platform or would like to support me. Thank you for listening and again, if you're looking for integrity, compassion, and long-term thinking, vote Jose Luis Ropas. It's this one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jose, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
I can hear you and I can see you. That's great. You get away.
All right. So my name's Elizabeth Hudson and I'm running to ensure that the Cambridge Public School District has a world-class, exciting, and engaging curriculum. No child should ever be left behind in our schools, especially those who need the most support. But just as important, no child should ever be bored if they're ready for more right now. And I think as a district, we often present ourselves with what amounts to a false choice between these objectives. So a little bit about myself, I'm the mom of three boys. My husband Will and I are really excited to be raising here in Cambridge. I'm also an engineer who understands the incredible opportunities unlocked by a strong math and science foundation and I'm grateful to the public school system for the opportunity to build those when I was a student. So as is probably clear by now, my number one priority is to ensure, again, that we have that right curriculum, a rigorous and exciting and engaging curriculum, taught by educators who feel fully supported. And for those of you who don't currently have kids in our system, let me tell you that we don't have that across the board today. For example, in twenty-seventeen, the district removed algebra, known as advanced math, from its upper school curriculum. And we did this because of inequities in who was enrolling. And this pattern is a profound, persistent, and pernicious problem, which others have already touched on very eloquently, with which the district has had a long and nuanced history. But I believe the way to address it is by adding resources for the kids who need extra time and support, not by removing opportunities for advancement for those who are ready right now. And indeed, rather than slowing that curriculum, we should be giving our educators the resources that they need to help all of our kids access this content and to make it exciting and engaging, because different kids learn in different ways. But we're not doing that today. So I'll give you one example. In the past three fiscal years, we've added seventeen new administrative positions that pay more than classroom teaching and we've added no new math teachers. For a quarter of that cost, we could have doubled the size of our upper school math departments. And for those wondering if that's necessary, let me remind you that only half of our kids, fifty-three percent, are meeting or exceeding expectations in math today. The last question was what you can expect from me as a leader and the answer is it's easy to talk about problems, but it's also important to look at what is working and move in that positive direction. So for example, you can look at our lottery data. Today, we have programs that are regularly oversubscribed, like our language immersion programs and our Tobin-Monosori program, but never expanded. And in cases like this, where we have great data from our families telling us about what is working and sparking excitement and engaging and joy and understanding in their kids, the committee should be held responsible for using it and improving. Again, my name is Elizabeth Hudson and I appreciate your consideration.
Thanks very much. Appreciate that. I'm Robert.
Hi, my name is Robert Bobby Travis. I'm a lifelong resident of East Cambridge and currently I serve as a paraprofessional at the PBD School. Public education is the foundation of our democracy and the promise of opportunity for every child to thrive and succeed. To realize this, in our schools, we need to close opportunity gaps, allowing students to have access to equitable pathways leading to success in pursuing their goals. Students need to know that they are valued and cared for in our schools and that their identities and differences are assets rather than barriers to succeed in the classroom. Educators need the resources and support from the district and building leaders to effectively engage and teach our diverse student body. Families need to know that they are welcome participants in their students' education and in their communities. Stakeholders need transparency, consistency, accessibility in budget and policy matters. And I'm going to hold the superintendent and school committee accountable. So I'm asking for your number one vote on Tuesday, November seventh. And to learn more about me, visit bobbytravis.com. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Bobby. Appreciate that. All right, Andrew, you're up next. And then we're actually gonna, after Eugenia, we're gonna add Franz if he wants to go again and speaks to the school committee, because he is running actually for both. So we'll see if he would like to say something about school committee at the end and we'll wrap. Andrew, are you there?
Can you hear me?
No, I can. Perfect. Go ahead, please. Take it away.
Good evening, Cambridge Port. My name's Andrew King. I'm a proud graduate of Cambridge Public Schools. Grew up in the port in Central Square, but I attended elementary and middle school at the Graham and Parks when it was right there in Cambridge Port on Upton Street. I benefited greatly from my CPS education and instilled in me my lifelong social justice commitments, launched me on a path of community organizing, action-based education research. I'm currently a renter in Cambridge, recently completing my PhD in public policy at UMass Boston, researching the community schools model, which provides wraparound supports to students and their families to combat poverty-related barriers to learning. I'm currently an education researcher at BU. A top priority for me is addressing the staggering educational opportunity gaps in our district by race, income, and disability, which are only reinforced by the pandemic. If elected, I'll work to proactively hire and retain more educators of color and support a fair contract and compensation for our educators, ensure anti-racist and inclusive curricula at all grade levels that incorporate the diverse histories of all students, expand academic supports and provide wraparound services for struggling students and their families to address the non-academic barriers to learning, including ensuring adequate staffing and specialized supports for our special needs students. I want less testing and more learning. We need to reduce MCAS standardized testing, which undermines our students, narrows the curriculum at the expense of teaching critical thinking and problem-solving skills and promote alternative forms of assessment. And I support eighth-grade algebra for all students, taught in integrated heterogeneous classrooms with adequate training, staffing, and supports for teachers. An accomplishment I'm proud of after college, I lived in New York City for seven years. I directed youth and education policy for a city councilor in East Harlem in the South Bronx, where I spearheaded efforts to expand after-school, youth recreation programs, and educational opportunities. We were one of the first districts in the country to adopt participatory budgeting years before it came to Cambridge and I directed that effort and expanded the district's participatory budget initiative, recruiting many marginalized youth and families and securing millions of dollars in community improvements, including nine new school computer labs. So I'm hoping to leverage my deep roots in Cambridge and extensive experience in city government, serving young people in this role. I would be honored to get your number one vote.
Thank you very much. Literally at two minutes and thirty seconds. Also, Eugenia.
Hi. Well, first of all, anyone who is still here, kudos for staying engaged almost to the end, since Franz might go after me. I'm Eugenia Schraha. I always bring a prop and this time it's my little mug that I got when I was a public high school teacher in the Bronx. Currently, I work for the Cambridge Nonprofit Coalition and for a nonprofit that helps incarcerated learners. I have a six-year-old who takes the bus to Baldwin, where he's in first grade, and a four-year-old who's at one of the DHSP preschools. My top priority, everyone who said the achievement gap, got it right. Recently CPS made headlines for being one of the few school districts to make a full recovery in its achievement scores since the pandemic, but there's a little problem, which is that it was pretty unequal. White and non-high-need students, that's a state term, are actually better off now than they were before the pandemic and those gains are actually masking students who are further behind and that includes Black and high-need students. So the school committee really needs to push CPS to give us answers on why this is happening. And that really means not acting, not rolling out a new program, but actually investigating. We have some elementary schools that are doing more than twice as well as other elementary schools here in the district. So it's very uneven and this is something CPS hasn't talked about yet. And we need to know what's working some places, what's failing at other places. We need to pilot specific programs based on this evidence and we need to track results and follow up. And in terms of one accomplishment, I would just think about, I had the advocacy to get the city to expand its after-school, which is what led to my run for school committee. In that advocacy, I learned that keeping a spotlight on policy issues and keeping the policy informed, I'm sorry, the community informed, is really the best way to make actual progress. And you can make actual progress. You cannot work miracles. But for example, when DHSP said they just didn't understand why they couldn't hire more after-school workers to staff the after-schools, we put together a table of surrounding municipal salaries, all of which are public, and we were able to show that Cambridge salaries were low. DHSP raised their salaries the next month. So even though my approach is not sexy, it's about staying on top of issues, making sure the public is informed and that is the best way to make sure you're making changes that matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Franz, do you think you'll go again? Or do you want to just send out your link?
Anna?
Please.
Yeah, let me know when you're ready.
Go ahead.
Hello, everybody. My name is Franz Pierre and I'm your guy. I would love your number one vote in November. I'm the first to run for city council and school committee, so I'm here to push the envelope. I'm a social worker, not a politician. I was born on Magazine Street, across the street from Dana Park. Then I moved down to the port over by Columbia Street. Like I said, I'm a social worker. I've been a teacher, coach, mental health specialist, street worker, DYS, residential worker, and intensive care coordinator for the elderly, saving them from evasions at Boston Medical Center. I'm the youngest of twelve siblings. I would actively pursue trade schools as early as elementary school, internship programs, production and studio programs. I would love to connect to Harvard and MIT and all the big wigs over there to give our youth ample opportunities to learn and become managers, bosses, and not just entry-level jobs. I believe the youth needs new and improved and challenging courses to keep them engaged. I think we're still using the old format, old models. Everything in life is actually changing, but the school, the school system and the setup is not changing. One accomplishment that I am proud of, that I'm a staple in the community, that people rely on, and also I started a business called Can I Strive to Help the Community Navigate the System? We feed about five hundred families. The event is to empower and build bridges through the community so we can keep our youth safe and also build bridges and connections for mothers and fathers to have more assistance and support.
Thank you so much and thank you so much to everybody who stayed, as Eugenia said, all the way until the end. We are really thankful for the candidates for taking the time to be here tonight and also especially for staying. I learned a ton about the challenges facing our community just from this one session and I think it's also really interesting that there are so many themes. So it's not a mystery what we need to work on. You know, it's just a matter of putting the right people to work. it's not a mystery what we need to work on. You know, it's just a matter of putting the right people to work. Um, and I, I really hope that no matter whether the candidates tonight get voted in or don't, that they find some way to plug in and uh, continue to lead, because all of us really need to be involved to get some of these major issues resolved. Um, please do continue to take the time to learn more about the candidates by going to their websites and checking them out and reaching out to them. They've also, they want to hear from you. Um, and let's encourage other people to do the same. Thank you very much for being here tonight and